We're finished.
We got another one. Eric, you gonna be able to run that one back?
Okay, Eric, is your mic on?
Yeah. Say it's on. You got it, huh?
Yeah, I can, I can run it back here.
Okay. All right, go ahead and give us your, uh...
All right, there's a lot that's changed. Um, there's a couple of new, uh, commercial ones. Uh, and there's one more new residential one, but I'll get to it. Uh, Canada Garden, all lots changed there, still building in phase four and five. A few more Rigs, they're still building in Sector Four. Uh, same thing for Charlotte Creek, Phase Two, Sector Four. Coslin, they're finishing up Phase Three, probably in the next couple of months, maybe three. Uh, Aberdeen, they're building in Phase One, and site work is still continuing on Phase Two. Settles Place, they're eliminating flat, expired. So, it expired from, I think, May tenth technically, which was Saturday, but, um, they never came to get another extension, so their flat hasn't expired. If they want to continue, they'll have to come back to you and get another, uh, flat. Uh, Timberline, uh, they're building in Phase Six and still waiting on final final Phase Seven. Seth Gardens, uh, pretty much same thing, they're still building on that. Um, I drove by there today and, I mean, it looks, it looks pretty nice. Uh, Mill Point, same thing, they're still working out there. Uh, Georgia Apartments, their, uh, site plans are under review. Um, I think they've been sent back with them, so we're waiting on them to bring them back. And that's the new one, Saratoga, they, somebody came in and bought the rest of the townhomes that were in Saratoga, that's in South Florida. So, they're gonna build the rest of the townhomes out, and that's in that subdivision.
Is Saratoga the development right before, um, Shallow, is that where it is?
If you're going south, Route Thirty-One, it's, uh, after Calvary. Uh, Comfort Inn, that's the one, uh, beside, uh, Zep Town. And they have begun work on it, they're moving their ground and, or getting pad and stuff. Uh, Holiday Inn Express, they're still working on that. Convenience Store on Forty-two and Seventy, they submitted, uh, corrections today. Um, so they're under review right now. Hunst Suites, uh, same thing pretty much, they're open for July, I'm not sure if that's how they're gonna make that. McWayne Industries should have changed that, they are, they're done, they have their CEO and everyone, so they're, they're good to go. Uh, Pediatric Dentist, that's on Limestone, it's in the, what used to be the Alon Power Building. Um, so they're changing that out to be a pediatric dentist. There's a storage facility, you may have seen some of the cleared off land on every one, uh, right after, or right before AC Lot. Um, if you're going north, that's gonna be a storage facility. It'll have, uh, climate controlled storage and it'll also have just regular storage. Uh, I guess, uh, un-air-conditioned storage. Dollar General, Highway Twenty-two and Georgia Parkway, they are, they have submitted plans and they are under review now. And the store on Forty-two and Twenty-five, um, oh, wait, no, I can go back. Forty-two and Seventy, I'm sorry, I got that mixed up, that's the one that, uh, they're building now. It's, uh, under construction. Twenty-five and Forty-two, that's the one that was, uh, reviewed, being, it's under review, like, turned it into that. And the Dollar General, Highway Twenty-five, that's gonna be, uh, gonna give you all clear directions where it's at, but, uh, did y'all know where the, uh, where Highway Three Ten is? Um, right after the Electrical Union Building, going towards Columbia, right at that building, it's locked aside that, that's where, uh, they're gonna build Dollar General.
In that corner, right there?
No, on the corner.
Just west of the house. The lot just west of the house, right next to the E Quadr Center.
Yes, it's just, uh, east of the E Quadr Center. Um, I don't know if y'all know where it, is it, uh, Wagabag, used to be, is that Wagabag? I can't remember. It's right across from there.
I don't have a plan yet, man.
That's it.
All right. Anybody got any questions for Kevin on his presentation? I have a question on terms, on part of terms. Have you done any research on that, or do you need to dig into anything on that?
About story appointment?
Yeah. Well, I don't mind, because I know.
Yeah, just before you, we do, did you get anything from Tommy? Because Bill had expressed that he'd be willing to come back on the serve to replace Tommy, but he didn't want to do chairman, so I think, I think that's...
Glad they made it back?
No, I don't think he wants it back.
Okay. Um, and I know I had another, uh, application that would turn it around.
Got one from...
To you?
To you?
To you?
But you went to Donnie Coles then?
Uh, I don't think I ever saw that.
Yeah, I think we did.
You may have, it was my back, but you may have lost it anyway. You should have got it.
I've got to get Tommy's. I have to work first.
Do we suggest they have to have new reservations?
I would just prefer, because he doesn't expire till August twenty-sixth.
Yeah. I think it would be... Properly, just that way, that is my question. Kevin's talked to him, did his job and stuff like this.
I mean, there would be an awful issue to an email, which is...
No, you might want to...
Yep.
Email work for me. We just need to know that, yes, he wants to resign, or... And are those other appointments when they go out, that they need to be formally done or in the winter, just doesn't matter?
I mean, because all that we got, um, Greg was last month, and then Sandy's been reappointed, I need to update her day, and the rest of them are August twenty-sixth.
If we can get the, uh... Greg, did you get that, uh, those other documents? And get copies to everybody? Uh, and then on the next meeting, I will go with that, and take your guys' recommendation, and we'll come up with, uh, something like that. Kevin, you got a bill, let's give him, let's send back in that he's, uh, want to come back in, so that we can, we'll get it too, and, uh, give her like a fresh check in.
Okay. Tommy's, uh, supposed to leave now. Also, supposed to see you next month, free time.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got anything?
Kevin, I have a question.
Hmm?
What are the guidelines for calling special, um, PC meetings?
The guidelines?
Yeah, or like the criteria for calling a special meeting?
Uh, it just needs to meet the, uh, notifications go out, um, I think it's twenty-one day?
So, it's not, is it something that can be decided by the planning commission or by you?
By the planning commission.
Okay. Because we had called, I know we ended up doing it, we had called a special PC meeting last month, but I don't remember the planning commission ever calling that meeting. They were gonna have a special meeting, but it got canceled?
Yes, that was for the camper.
Yes. And then we also called a special meeting last year on rezoning, and I was just, I was just a little confused, because I thought it's kind of on the, um, person bringing up if they want a rezoning or if they want to change to meet the deadlines for the meeting, right?
Yes.
So, it's just really us that can call a special meeting?
You can call a special meeting too, yeah.
But I'm saying, like, they can't necessarily just call a special meeting, it has to be a decision made by us or you?
I think that I, that I can call a special meeting if we get to, am I right about that, huh?
Well, it all depends on whether they can ask for one, but if they can't meet the time, the timeline makes a difference. So, it depends on what kind of meeting it is, if she has to send out notices.
But would that be something we would be informed of, like saying, can you meet on this day, or is it just pretty much something that you say, this is the meeting?
We, we would try to do, you know, make sure everybody can meet it, but sometimes if it's a time, it's a time frame thing, you know, like, the one that we just canceled, it was a time frame thing.
Because my concern with that one is I already had plans that night, um, so I just didn't know, I thought special meetings were just mainly things that we called because we needed to, you know, like, we didn't get to complete business or something, or, so I didn't, I, because I, I think for developments and things like that, you know, they know when they have to have things into you.
True.
So, we shouldn't have to necessarily redo our plans.
No, I understand that, but this one was a, and, and usually when special meetings come to be called, it's a time sensitive thing.
Yeah.
It's not just because, hey, I want to do it, you know, right now.
Yeah. What would be time sensitive about it?
Uh, like, they, they wanted their business to open as soon as possible, um, because they were trying to make their busy time of year. And, uh, well, you know, we said, yeah, you can call, if we need to call a special meeting for that, we can.
Okay.
So, that was the calling.
Because I could just see that being like something that any developer could do and say, this is a time sensitive issue because of, you know...
It could be abused, yeah.
Yeah, I can see that, that's why I was just wondering.
I would, you know, I'm not gonna let them call a special meeting just because they want to do it. If they have a legitimate reason.
Yeah, that's when we have deadlines and they know they have to get things in before.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I, I did, of course, Kevin, on those, uh, on that storage facility that's on Thirty-One?
Yes.
Who, who was the owner, or who's, who built it?
Uh, I can tell you, I'm gonna get an email. I don't know that, uh, property owner changed yet. How slow, but...
You said the Dollar General Twenty-five, on the, which one was it, it's the one house?
It's the lot right past the... Give me one second, Mr. Norris, I'm trying to find the, the email.
Do you, do you know if they're local, if somebody that's here?
I don't believe they're...
They're not from here?
No.
Crown Construction.
That's it.
Is the one that I've been talking with. Crown Construction out of Tuscaloosa.
Crown Construction.
Yeah.
Think they own Crown Construction and Crown Property Investments.
For those of y'all that don't know, this is Ryan, he's with the fire department, he's stepping in as a, acting fire marshal, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I hope sorry people can take it officially, but, um, I won't wait and say, but, um, we're glad to have you, man.
All right.
Did everybody understand where I was talking about that Dollar General on Twenty-five?
No, I was gonna ask you, is it by the fire station?
No, it's the other way.
Okay.
Towards Columbia.
Yeah, let me pull it up on my map here.
Will you say Twenty-five and Forty-two?
No, it's on Twenty-six, Twenty-five. Twenty-five and Forty-two is the gas station.
Oh, okay, sorry, is that gonna be by the, on the side of the fire department?
Yes, it will be on the side of the fire, fire station, yes.
Like only across the road, or like past it, or past it?
It will be, gosh, I wish I could show you my map.
Okay, I just...
Do you remember where we, um, put the zoning for the, um, air v camp, um, area? It's two lots after.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Just E Quadr, and the, the eighteen. And, uh, each one, and I'll, I'll look at them as, but, you know, it's this old house right in the building, it's gonna be this lot right here. Twenty-five, going through Columbia, eighteen.
Yep.
It's gonna be this lot here.
Okay. It wasn't the Wagabag though, was it?
It was called Wagabag, it went right across from the tree.
But it was the Wagabag?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, that's not in the city, unless...
I'm getting my Wagabags and, uh, Junior Food Mart, and what was the, the third one? It had a name, I can't remember.
Uh, we were talking about the one that, uh, MacFell, man?
Was that, was that property, that same piece of property that was, uh, Setus Place?
No, it's across the street from that.
Across the street from, okay. Now, that was the B two, that's a place that, that's where it all happened.
Yeah, Setus Place had, uh, the owner of that property, Setus Place had, uh, RG on the east side, and then the Twenty-five side had B two.
B two of, yeah.
Okay, so I got a question regarding Dollar General. Do they, is it a corporate thing, or are they all individually owned, like, it's just, it strikes me as odd that...
They're ranches?
Yeah. I, I mean, obviously somebody's trying to make money, and I don't, I don't care about that, but I didn't know if it was an organized thing, like, do they come to the city, or is it just individuals are like, hey, I want to pop up a... No, I think, I don't owe me to, is I think they're just, they're corporately owned, they're all, they're all owned by Dollar General. Okay, so they're just, I mean... Okay, so they're just going, they're just buying up land and going everywhere.
Yeah, in rural areas.
Okay, okay, yeah. And I, I haven't heard anything like they're gonna close the one, uh, the, um, safe one. Yeah, that was my other question. I hadn't heard that. When it was the one down on Thirty-One, I was like, well, they're probably gonna close that one, and then it may be an opportunity for somebody else to come in and do something. And then they say, I was like, wow. There's been no word that they're gonna close it. Yeah. I guess if they're getting business. They're not gonna build, I don't think they're gonna make money. No, they're gonna wait until it's a little saturated, yes.
What's that, how much longer does the subdivision have on Three O Six that y'all give an extension to?
It's expired, that was the Setus Place.
That was Setus Place, that's expired.
That is Setus Place.
It expired the tenth, May tenth, two days ago.
Okay, we've been talking, I've been talking to you numerous times about this parking, the, the square footage on the parking, it seems we getting into a, uh, coming back for variance, so you wanna...
Which?
Let them know what, where we stand with this?
Which one?
On any of the park. It's like Dollar General right here.
Oh, you're speaking of Dollar General?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, uh...
The square footage.
He's talking about Dollar General is asking for variance, they've already asked for one variance and they've given it on the one, the Dollar General on Georgia, but they're gonna ask for a variance on the one on Twenty-five too. So, you know.
Parking capacity?
Yes, I, I think their square footage calls for like, I'd say like fifty something parking places, and, you know, they're just like, that's a little...
What I'm getting at is our square footage number too big for parking? They asked for, we had fifty-two parking places for them to be in with their square footage, and they asked for thirty-five or thirty-six, one of the two, and, and this is the second time this has come up. So, I'm thinking the square footage altogether could be too much, because it continually to come.
But would that be also, see, because you can't, I guess, differentiate between the businesses, because I'm like, if it's Chick-fil-A, they probably have these more parking, you know, spaces, but like, I can see how a Dollar General doesn't need that many, so I don't know, like, how you...
They're broken...
You lessen it too much, how that would affect their business.
They're broken down by what type of business.
Oh, they are, so restaurants would be different than stores? Okay, so this is for...
That'd be general retail with that.
Gotcha. So, you're saying, Key, that you think for this type, that would not be, you might have too much on it?
Obviously, and it just comes two times to the variance committee, so do we need to change the square footage in that, in that field?
I mean, that would just...
Might depend on the density of the area it's going in, if it's very dense residential, they probably don't need to park. If they're gonna be shopping.
This is actually the, the third variance they've got, because they got a variance on the one that's on Thirty-One, clear. That's been a risk. It's, it's known.
If businesses has to keep coming back for a variance, then that tells me that something's wrong somewhere, and if they give them the variance, we might, we might want to look at, y'all might want to look at the square footage.
I'll tell you what's that one.
Yeah, they hit the building on the north side. You remember the running where they opened, someone ran it, just stopped, and run it, it's the same thing, decent.
They work around here, yeah.
It's not rubbery, is it?
It's rubbery, it's a rubbery education place.
It's like that. It's like that, flat, I guess, inside.
Like the near brim, yeah.
Pretty large. It's not last week. Some last week. You know, because I don't want, um, yeah, things are after the half that are in front, so I don't know, probably on Cyber, but, yeah.
For general retail, any building under fifty thousand per feet, that's a big bill, um, is one per every two hundred per feet. Once you go above fifty thousand per feet, between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand per feet is two fifty, and anything above a hundred thousand per feet is three hundred.
Yeah, uh, our sixth caucus, uh, which we started the meeting out. We'll, uh, the agenda here was calibrating the order, uh, need approval for the minutes for the last meeting?
Yeah, I make motion, we approve minutes for the, for this, uh, the, uh, eight before ten.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I was thinking I was up here. All right, uh, Kevin, it already gave us a report to the members, we bypassed that, does anybody else have any reports that they thought trouble about? I don't have anything either. Do we have any new business other than what Kenny was talking about, and I guess we can consider that maybe, but, uh, can't do anything official tonight. I don't, in, in my opinion, and camera reviews and all that kind of stuff in the past, I don't think that square footage is really out of line. Now, if they get a variance, there's nothing that I can do or that anybody else can do about it, that's, that's up to the variance committee, but, uh, that formula that actually came from the sort of building code, and, uh, and that's, that's where it came from, and they do it nationwide, uh, or it's not really a sub building, it's a national building. So, my opinion is the legal like it is, uh, that's just my opinion. What's your opinion, Kevin, you, you've phoned with it everybody?
Uh, I mean, to be honest, the only ones that really asked for it are Dollar General. Um, and I, I can't recall, especially under my time, it's only been, they're the only ones that asked for it. Um, but I mean, what they're asking for is not unreasonable either. You know, it's, I agree that for a Dollar General, getting two parking places is a lot.
It is, it is, but, and we're not talking about just Dollar General.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, and I, I still think that needs to be a case by case basis.
Right. That, that's kind of what I was looking at on that, I don't think we need to change it.
The grass is gonna increase.
Look at the square footage of that building, that Dollar General's building, and if they asking for thirty-five, that tells you where you, where you at. If you have another building to come in at that size, then instead of them having to go to a variance committee over it every time, then that would be where you would consider. I don't know the square footage of the building.
I was trying to look it up, I couldn't find, I can't find the plans on my iPad.
If they require fifty-two parking spots, it would be ten thousand four hundred, because I, international building codes is one parking spot for every two hundred square feet. And that's the international building codes that have been adopted.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, it's, it would be easier
to retain.
To let them go to the variance committee, then us change the code that the international code is about, and is used, again, nationwide, so. I don't think it would be adequate for us to change. Again, that's my opinion, it's up to the committee, I'm, I'm just wondering.
So when they ask for a variance, usually is it less than thirty-five, have there been any time, Kevin, less than thirty, always been thirty-five?
Well, not, not specifically thirty-five, but somewhere in that area.
You gotta look at the Dollar General, they're, they're a quick shot. I mean, folks don't go in there and buy a bill of groceries, uh, but now, you know, if you went in with a building like that size and put a restaurant in there, you're probably gonna need more than that. I'm not sure what the restaurant code is as far as parking places, but it's probably gonna need more than that, because people stay on it. And, uh, it's gonna get on the type and what you're putting in the business. And that, that goes to say that the Dollar General closes one of those doors, they put that back up themselves, not say that somebody else came in there and they, now they're like, they have more parking places, it wouldn't be made.
That is, that is true.
Yeah. So. And I was saying, it's gonna be by themselves.
And like Randy reminded me, that their lot size kind of dictated that too, like, they couldn't put that building and fifty-two parking places on that lot.
It's not big enough.
Yeah, it's just not big enough.
And one common question, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
What happened about the, uh, the Walker House that they were looking at off, uh, A and O?
Last I heard, they were looking for engineers, but that was six months ago. Have you, has been detectives already, your location? Um, yeah, last I heard was they were looking for engineers, but their engineers that they had just kind of left them, um, six months, so that was a while back. Five, you'd think it's six months ago, five.
So they have the property in, still?
Far as I know. They have, I want to say they were also waiting on, uh, the county for, uh, where their driveway was gonna be, or their entrance was gonna be. So, uh, that's also one thing too. And they, they might have engineers now and they're waiting on the county, I'm not sure, that's what I heard either.
Anybody got anything else?
Any questions to attend?
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
June?
Yeah.
You say that, it's like nurses talk, you don't say on a shift that it's so quiet, it gets crazy, so once.
Yeah, Kevin, what you said.